Is it possible to do it before you started explaining this?
Shall I wait for Star?
Are we waiting for Star?
I had not heard that she wasn't coming. Let me see if I can get Deanna Mitchell on the line here.
What's that? Just get it going.
Or will you take a break?
Do you have a break? You might be out earlier. Okay. And then if I could do a quick interview just to, because we're probably going to go live here for five and six just to say, just let folks know what's happening. I think I've spoken with you before but not in person. We just did this.
Interview with the realtors.
Okay. I'm going to now put hands free and the lights activated. Oh, got it, got it.
Yes. The actual memo for Monday, is that up there?
Yep, let me get it.
I'm going to call to order this special meeting for discussion on ASD memorandum 132, boundary changes for Birchwood, Homestead Elementary Schools to accommodate Eagle River Elementary Schools. Sorry, Katie. And we have our first reading.
Alicia, do you want a hard copy?
No. Mark copy, anyway. Okay.
So who's reading during the first reading?
You know, we just bring it up, but then we have a work session. A work session report. There's no...
So Ms. Snelling, as the committee chair, would you like to bring us up to speed here?
Sure. As the board knows, and probably those in attendance, we have had four community meetings, two to get input from the community through talking with them in person, and feedback rooms, and through a survey. And then we compiled everything and we went back to them the following week for another two meetings and reported back out. Got another chance to talk with people after they were presented with the conclusions and the recommendations from the administration. And so the purpose of this, we do have the memo that's out here, and today's meeting is to be a first reading. It is also to get the rest of the board fully up to speed with where things are at on this short-term process, because we do want to have a vote on Monday, March 4th, coming up, so that we can get things in place and get things rolling for next year. And so I believe we do have a presentation by the administration, and so if they'd like to come up and...
Sure. Madam President, the rest of the board, we just wanted to share first the presentation that was given as a result of the data that was provided last week, both at Eagle River High School on Wednesday, and I believe Chugiak on Thursday, Chugiak High on Thursday. Just to bring everyone up to speed with the information, the data, the reasoning behind this meeting, as well as really some decision-making on short-term solutions. And then at the end of this meeting, we'll turn it back over to Elisa to share more of a long-term, what's happening there. So just to understand the short-term, the solution criteria that we desired is their short-term versus long-term, and from the beginning that was separated. I believe at the very first meeting, Elisa Snelling was present, staff, and I believe Mark Foster. Were the board members present? At that room upstairs as well?
No.
No, yeah. So at the planning meeting, when the decisions were split into two. And the criteria used, and Mark will talk about this additionally, Mark Stock, who has been our liaison in the connection between the board and the work of the capital and operations team, was that it's least disruptive for students and families, and economically viable. And if you remember, when we were notified that next year the buildings would not be ready, there was a letter that came forward to the board. And the letter stated that greening remaining in Chugiak High was a good option for one more year, and the reason being the disruption for students. And that real point was not only the disruption of students who have already been disruptive, but some of the ideas for longer-term solutions were to mix schools around, some of them even had sixth graders going here, and so it would have disrupted more students than were displaced, not only at Chugiak, but also displaced as a whole school unit of greening. And then also economically viable. We do, all of our operations really are under the umbrella of what we can afford, just as any other organization would be, or even personal family. When we met, before I turn it over to Mark, when we met at the meetings, it was very clear about two pieces of urgency for which families felt, and employees. And the families, especially of Eagle River, again, if I could just step back, the letter that was sent out to families really identified that perhaps splitting families because we kept students with teachers disrupted family life, more so. Some families may have had children in three different schools, because preschool was in Ravenwood, first through third grade was in Homestead, optional, and the older students were at Birchwood. And so if your family had a range of students in either different programs or different grade levels, you may be, your family's splitting up. And so we thought that might not, that was good for after the earthquake, because there was trauma experienced by staff and students, let's keep our community together. However, the letter went out that said, you know, we suggest that we go back to the community to ask, what is it that we really want, and what would families desire? Hence, this kind of short-term, long-term. From those meetings, now bringing us up to speed, two items came up very quickly. The need to know, and I'll start with staff, the need for staff to know, am I going to be working in this school? The answer for greening was a clearer path, yes, unless anyone chose, but the path for Eagle River is very different, because depending on the zoning, and how many students actually chose to go to individual schools, our staff follows. And so teachers, maybe there's two teachers, first-grade teachers, that both want to be at Homestead, but only one first-grade class would be there. So teachers wanted to know, and to have their own family settled, about what is going to be the process for me to transfer, or for me to understand where my next year's location would be. And we have a process for that, with that, for that rather, with AEA, as well as HR. There are already systems in place for anyone in the district to transfer. We made our commitment that we would try to move that up, have people's placements made in those new schools, so that they would have an opportunity to join in the district-wide transfer phase. So we wanted to be fair to teachers, to have this first transition as a hardship happen before the regular staffing, so that they would still have choices to be made. That was one thing. And then we heard from families that they wanted an opportunity to go to a different school. And our lottery system isn't just designed for specialized, special mission programs, such as optional, or immersion, any kind of charters. It's actually designed for a choice other than the zone for which you live. So if I wanted a boundary exception, if you will, we've, you know, termed them that, exception or exemption, they've been both called, I would fill out that lottery and choose another neighborhood school that I would want to go. And that way, it's tracked and the data's there. And we know where folks live, and then the next year, what would roll over, then we would know the families, how many spots would need to leave open. Our lottery system is an audited system, it's very complex, it's run by a third party, not internally. So we, parents to be given that opportunity, we also wanted to bring that up two weeks, so that we could really work with those hardship family cases as needed. And they would know, the process for that is filling out that boundary exception, or that lottery. And those were two just glaring timeline issues that led us to really understand the bigger impact of a short-term, that it can't really linger forever. So with that being said, I'm going to turn it over to Mark, and he will share the bigger pieces of data for which helped inform some of the short-term solutions that were presented. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Bishop. So, starting with the three criteria, one of the very first questions from our community was, how come there were solutions that we thought of that were not surveyed? And so the reasons for that are, number one, many of those options were long-term, not short-term. Another one was that they weren't economically viable for next year, and the other one is that they have been, weren't the least disruptive. So we started with trying to find solutions that fit those three things, short-term, economically viable, and least disruptive. And those were the options we surveyed our families for. So if you look at the chart, the first thing you'll notice is the dark blue band at the top. This was the first question posed to the community. Of these elementary attendance options, which ones are you most in favor of? And this is for the Eagle River Elementary School itself. And across the top, you'll see the totals. There were 2,554 total families who filled out the survey, and you'll see where they came from along the top. So from the Eagle River, these are families or parents that identified themselves as having a student that was at Eagle River Elementary. There were 564 surveys filled out with that identification. There were 156 families who said they had a student in the neighborhood program as a school proper, and let me back up, the Eagle River Area Elementary could have been any of those elementaries in the Eagle River area. There were 564 of those. On the far right, you'll see the optional families, there were 114 surveys turned in that identified a student there. So in dark blue, you'll see that pretty much by far, the most popular choice there was temporarily realigning the boundary areas for attendance. However, there's an anomaly at the bottom of the chart. If you go down to the bottom where it says none of the above, you'll notice there were 25 percent, who's 39 under Eagle River Elementary Neighborhood, who said none of those choices. And then you'll see 33 percent from the optional said, none of those choices are what I want. So if you'll go to the next slide, those were identified by going through the comments. So the survey had a multiple-choice question, and then it was followed by a text box where they could type in other responses. So sorting through the 1,200-plus optional notes that people put in the text box, most of those centered around folks who said, well, what about going to the Kennedy Center on the base? Or what about Mount Spur? And those would represent those who had clicked none of the above, because that shows up in the text box. So the reasons we didn't put those on are, had to do with some concerns about access and security on the base itself. If you're familiar with Real ID, I know you are, and all those issues, if you can picture 300 families coming in for a musical with grandparents and people from out of town, trying to get on the base to see a grandchild or something, you can picture some of those access issues that we have. Another one is the cost to retrofit Kennedy. Most of you know that's our data center, and there's been a lot of money spent turning that into a specific center for technology and so on. And then there's the transportation time and cost from families who live on the far side of Eagle River to get to Jay Bear, going in through that Bonneface entrance, and so on. So those were the reasons why they weren't on the original. So the next, so our recommendation following that is that we would do a temporary realignment of the attendance areas, and so that's why you see the boundary maps and everything that have been out for the public for a little while. So our next steps is the board's having this discussion now, presenting this to you for first reading. And then administration, of course, has a series of next steps that we will go through on our own, that include everything from communicating the final decision of the board, to dealing with the transportation, staffing, and all of those things, including, Dr. Bishop mentioned the zone, and the exemptions, and lottery. So if there's a family that this particular zone does not work for them, for one reason or another, they have the same access that all our families do in Anchorage, and that is to apply for an exemption, to do something different. The next question was about the open optional program. And in this one, along dark blue, you'll see the question, and then of course, across the top, you'll see the responses. Now, if you go down to dark blue, you'll see that since the majority of families don't have a child in the open optional, most of them, of course, marked no preference. But if you'll look at how the Eagle River Elementary optional families, there were 18 who said no preference, there were 63 who said Homestead, 17 remain at Birchwood, and 16 at Fire Lake. Now, you'll notice that this is coming up, the next slide, you'll notice that our recommendation does not match exactly what the families there were asking for. So our recommendation is that we would place this optional program at Fire Lake. And our reasoning is that, number one, Fire Lake does have available space. The room constructions of the four rooms that they were looking at have openings for open walls, where the open optional philosophy makes a nice clean fit with the way those rooms are structured. It disrupts fewer students and families, fewer students require busing. However, there has been some requests from some of those families who have said, if I currently go to, I currently walk, and if I have to transport my child, I might have to not be in that program. So that's an issue that transportation would have to take a look at. So the next slide, again, reviews the next steps that we have, and this is the board's chance to see that. And then, of course, the same administration next steps. So the third question in the survey had to do with secondary students. And so you'll notice along the top, when it comes to Greening Middle School, you'll notice the responses there, and the most common response was to continue to house Greening at Chugiak. Now, on the far right, you'll notice the student or middle, high school, middle school students or high school students and their responses. One of the suggestions from the families in the very first night we did the community session was, what about student voice? How do they feel? So we quickly added that question to the survey. 241 students identified themselves as students of middle or high school, and this was their response. Very much in line, actually, even higher than some of those at the parent level. Once again, if you look at the bottom, there's another anomaly. There were a number of families, percentage-wise, who said none of the above. And so in the text boxes, here's what we noticed. When you go read the comments, one prevalent response was, can you just combine Eagle River High School and Chugiak High School? We've had to do some explanation as to why that wasn't a short-term option on the survey list. Why couldn't we pick that? The reason is coupleful. One, the logistics to do that for fall of 2019 are huge. Trying to combine two high schools in a short-term option, there's all kinds of issues that have to do with everything from graduation, to transcripts, to academics, and athletics, and conference schedules, and there's so many details that go to the different high schools' experiences in their conferences, and all the things they have. Combining those and emerging requires a lot of lead time to do, so it was not a short-term option. Of course, another common response was, whatever you do, don't combine them. So you get this sort of dichotomy in the community over what they want, and it's not unanimous in that regard. So with that in mind, our short-term solution is to continue to house Greening at Chugiak High School, and once again, the same administration steps that we would go through. So that's the summary. And so with all that in mind, then that brings us to the part about boundaries. And so with that, I guess I'll stop here and see if there's questions about the survey, at which point I would want to turn it over to operations and transportation for boundary questions. But I'll be happy to answer any questions you might have about the survey, if any.
Are there any board questions or comments? Mr. Donnelly, do you have any questions?
No, I have no questions.
Okay, thank you. Oh, Deanna, do you have any questions? Ms. Mitchell?
You know what, I, at this point, I don't, I just was able to open up the document, so I, no, not right.
Okay, thank you.
So with that, I guess we turn it over to Dr. Bishop and the team as far as transportation and the boundary issues itself.
So with that, I'll offer Tom Roth to come forward, and we have received feedback already in regard to the boundaries, both in to share the optional program and what we can do. And we do have some smaller fixes that we could offer, certainly not anyone, you know, attending, because there's, students are actually scattered around the district for that. But we have some small solutions that we're working on, as well as there's concern just about the bridge, you know, over the road in regard to walkers. So we continue to take those in and continue to problem-solve this. But I'll turn it over to Tom.
So through the chair, I just would like to comment, I've got Mr. Dan Marigan, who was with me this afternoon, to talk to specifics about the proposed transportation plan. I was not personally involved in the planning session. I will relate, though, the guidance that was given to the planners was that, you know, we would strive to portion the student population to meet what were the existing programmatic capacities of the gaining schools, as well as being sensitive to neighborhood considerations. So if I might just very briefly talk to some of the numbers, and I'll get to some other points that Dr. Bishop addressed. So with regards to what is being proposed as a boundary division, so what we are looking at in terms of absolute numbers of students, and these are based on this year's numbers, that 137 students would be transported to Birchwood ABC, and this would bring that school up to an enrollment of about 396 kids, which is right at their capacity. And that to Homestead, there would be 144 students that would walk to that school. Again, that would bring that population of students up to about 490 to 93 students. Again, right about their capacity. Now, what Dr. Bishop had discussed, Fire Lake Elementary School is what we are proposing for locating the optional program. Right now, I think that student count is about 90 kids. And we understand, you know, this really is an exceptional circumstance that has been created by the outcome of the earthquake and the closure of that school. We understand, and have heard from a number of parents that would otherwise continue in the program but can't because of the physical constraints of having to transport. So we did do an analysis based on the superintendent's guidance, and what we are proposing to do would be to provide transportation to those optional program students who live within the existing Eagle River Elementary School boundary.
One, Tom, my understanding was that it was for the walking students in the boundary?
Yes, that's correct.
The issue is that there are some students who attend the optional program that live in the busing zone of that.
Thank you for the clarification.
As well as students who don't live in the zone at all. So this particular, in looking at the number of students and our busing and processes, we believe that the students that presently walk, or would walk to Eagle River Elementary School and are in the optional program, could receive busing. However, the students that are bused already into the program would not fall into this category, and that was some of the feedback at the meeting, a particular parent. So we continue to work on that.
Yeah, thank you, Dr. Bishop, for that correction. The students that are within the walking boundary.
I can hear that superintendent's fine, but it's getting harder and harder to hear Tom.
Okay, that's rare, I usually talk too loud, but understood. And Mr. Donnelly, my regrets, if there's a bit of data...
You actually need to go back, you're bubbling it up.
Okay, so if there's data that you did not hear, I'm happy to repeat, or at least the gist of the discussion.
Mr. Don?
Mr. Donnelly, is there anything you'd like him to repeat?
No, that's okay, it's just if you can get closer to the microphone, or the microphone can get closer to you.
Well, yeah, I think we've got it turned up and as optimal as we can, so I apologize that you're having a tough time hearing it, yes.
Yeah, this is Deanna, and I second that, it's almost impossible to understand what anybody says, other than the people up on the dais.
Yeah, it's, unfortunately, it is what it is, and we've done everything we can, and we can't improve it.
Thank you for trying. Thank you, Deanna, for doing.
And then the last population of students are the preschool kids that we are currently transporting to Ravenwood Elementary School, and the plan is to continue with that transportation program into the next academic year.
Ms. Snelling, did you have a question?
Just a quick one, when you're talking about doing the bus for the walkers of the optional program, are you looking at, like, having one central drop point that they would get, they would walk to that point? Or were you planning on doing a neighborhood pickup and then going up to Birchwood? What was it going to look like?
Do you want to address that, Dan?
Yeah, we actually...
Turn on your mic and get close. These actually, when you get too close, it...
We actually honestly haven't gotten out far yet. This is kind of a new addition to the planning that we're taking up right now, so, I mean, all options are being talked about right now.
Would it be able to be considered, if it were some sort of a drop point, kind of, you know, a mechanism that, you know, those families that were normally bused, if they were dropped at, you know, that location, they could also participate in this bus going up to Birchwood, or Fire Lake, excuse me?
I would answer that, that's a possibility, because they could even be bused to the closest, the bus stop closest in that zone for walkers. You know, it doesn't even necessarily, because at the building, if there's construction there, you wouldn't want to do that, but if there was, the closest bus stop could be used where parents, you know, take their kids to, that could be, that's always an option, and I've worked through those issues before.
Right. And I think, not to preempt, Mr. Marigan, that we would want to make it as user-friendly to parents as we could, that we would designate a route with a number of stops to accommodate that student population.
And just, I did receive a personal letter with someone that had concerns with the walking to Homestead from the Eagle Ridge neighborhood. Apparently, there's, and I think we talked about it a little bit, it's a, they have to use a bridge, and it's a very busy road there. And according to her, it's an unlit street that has no sidewalks, and there's quite a few students who would benefit from a bus stop in that neighborhood. Also, quite a few wild animals in this neighborhood, because it opens directly to the river. So if we looked at all of those safety issues for those neighborhoods, and where those walking paths would be.
Yeah, when, that area has previously been reviewed by the hazardous committee, which is, involves the guidelines that we get from the state as far as whether the state reimburses for busing or not. And if the state does feel like a walking area within a mile and a half is a hazard, there's a hazardous area, then they will provide busing. But within a mile and a half, if it is safe to walk under their guidelines, they won't provide busing. So that's an area that greening kids have been using that bridge for years, north, they're North, they're going to get down into Greening, so it's been used for decades now.
Yeah, but we're not talking first graders or, you know, I think smaller children.
Unfortunately, the hazardous committee doesn't distinguish by age. So I mean, if it's safe, it's safe. If it's not, it's not. There's no category for each grade level in the hazardous guidelines, so.
So as a district, can we deviate from that if we know we've got first graders walking those roads that shouldn't be? I mean, elementary or middle school and high school's a little bit different, but I wonder about the grade level.
Sure. To the President, we'll certainly look at it. Just what I would, just as a caution, it may be additive to the numbers of buses. I mean, if that's the intent of the board, I mean, we certainly, you know, would support, you know, meeting that intent.
But to that end, a member, I just want to let you know, we work through hundreds of those a year
Right.
In regard to parent concerns about their own roads. And so there is a process that we work through with each of those, where we send people, they look at it, isn't just, you know, it actually, we'll work it through that process, and then depending on what the outcome is, and present it back to the board about the cost. But generally, when routes are set, then we continue to get those in in regard to concerns, and a lot of them are wildlife concerns and this concern. So our staff go out, ride them, look at them, talk with the parents, and mitigate those things each year. So I foresee this being part of that process as well.
Okay, that's what I wanted to hear. It wasn't just a federal, you know, whatever the House Committee said or whatever, but that we evaluate that also.
Yeah, we do periodic reviews of many areas in Anchorage based on the community's concerns, so.
But we would do these as we're making these changes and bus routes?
Yeah, we could, yes.
Okay. Mr. Foster?
I would like to encourage the administration's consideration of presenting a transportation plan concurrently with the boundary changes, so we can understand the implications of the decision.
And I would second that.
Could you define that more, what kind of information you'd like in that?
Well, just, you know, if we are changing any of our bus routes, or including additional bus routes, or whatever, if we could just maybe take a look at that and
Just look at it from the point of view of a parent who wants to understand what the implications are of the boundary change for their students next year. I think that would be helpful.
Are you specifically speaking to the bus stops and buses? Those won't be done within Monday, but certainly, as we move forward, as students, like around our district, get understanding, so I'm just not sure, because I don't believe the stops have been estimated through our system yet. Just the, once we know where the boundaries are, then that next step would be determining those next steps, and I was just curious about your timeline.
I think I want to give the parents some assurance about the relative distance they may have to travel and how long their student might be riding a bus, if this is a new experience compared to prior periods.
And what is your timeline?
You tell me. How fast can you get it together?
That type of information would be longer than Monday's board meeting, if that was your...
So what timeline would we need to have the routes done and then reporting back to parents about what the routes would look like?
Actually, that wouldn't take very much time at all.
By tomorrow, or by?
By tomorrow, yeah.
And then how, then notifying the parents?
If I might, to the superintendent, I think we can develop the routes, and there'd be a couple of different ways to inform parents. One would be through transportation and their communication means, but we could also work it through the school-based staff and elementary education to also have some redundant communication to families, what it would look like.
Can we push it out on our electronic system separately by families?
Yeah.
Okay. So it can be done by Monday?
Yes.
Okay. Ms. Hildy?
I think, well, you know what I'll say about that, but isn't there, I'm concerned about rushing through that process, right? I was supposed to go close. You know, we're going to do a boundary change Monday, if that's what the board votes, and then you go through the process. I don't understand why it would have to all be, I don't want it to rush, right? If I am a parent wanting to know how long this can take my kids to school, just tell me when that information's available, but I want just the accurate information, I don't, I wouldn't, I don't see the benefit, I guess, of rushing that, given everything else that is going on.
Mr. Foster, since you suggested it, would you like to answer that question?
If I'm a parent, I want to know what the boundary change means for me, and the boundary change for me might mean that my kid is walking, or my kid's riding a bus. My kid's riding a bus, I want to understand, is that a faraway bus stop or close? You don't have to have the right spot, but within a block or two, where do you think it might be, so I can process, what does it mean for me, so that I can have an intelligent comment back about, is this boundary change makes sense? So I'm really looking for that feedback loop to enable the community to have input on the proposed boundary change in an informed manner.
Ms. Hildy?
I guess I hear the input part. I mean, the goal really for parents is that they need that information to make informed decisions for their child's education within the lottery period, so they would have that information before the lottery period closes?
Through the President, to a member, absolutely. When we were figuring out how to get these boundaries to everyone, we tried to break it down, and we were sending individualized letters to families, that's part of our communication, and that took more, that took a week to do, to turn that around, to match the students, the boundaries, and the individualized letter. And that's why I asked, because when we met on this last week, as a summary to plan for this week, it was, we couldn't turn it around soon enough, so we had to send it to everyone and a map, not a personalized letter. So hence, my question about actually getting it to homes, we had this discussion already. And so getting it individually to home, so it's not, it's an email that comes across that I think is for everyone, that I'm actually getting a letter that says, your bus stop will be at this corner, this corner, at 8:50 or 7:45. That was my understanding from Mr. Foster, that he would desire that before, so that they could provide testimony. That was my understanding. But if it is to be able to move forward with these and have the information so that they can make alternate choices, that can happen. But were we able to get these out to individual families and cross-reference our student database with transportation database, how we had planned to do it Monday, by this Friday?
Turn that over.
Yeah, all the data can be compiled tomorrow, so the notification process can, the plan, the notification process can
When, Ms. Roth, when we spoke on Monday, it couldn't get done until after this meeting. So we tried to get these out to parents in an individualized envelope to their home before this meeting, and it couldn't be done. So I'm just questioning, what is the true time that you need?
Well, I think, if I might, the other driver to this discussion was, we have to approve boundaries before we can, you know, do this official notification. That's the other consideration. So, you know, I stand by the product that has been prepared by elementary education and transportation, but it may, it could potentially see some modification. So, you know, I think once, and this is, in my recollection, a part of the discussion that Dr. Bishop is talking to, we don't want to be premature notification to families direct until we feel certain that this is the boundary that will be approved by the board, and then based on the data maintained by student transportation and the routes, that we would notify those families.
Ms. Coleman?
I was going to say, our parameters might be sufficient if we know that no house is going to be further than a certain distance from a bus stop, no child's going to be riding a bus for longer than so many minutes. I don't know if that would satisfy Mr. Foster, but I think I can under, you know, feel like I can make a decision based on those kinds of things without asking transportation to actually tell me where the stops are and put them on a map, which I can understand until we change the boundaries. It's asking an awful lot to tell us what everything's going to look like.
Mr. Foster?
Just approach it from the point of view of a parent, and ask yourself what they need to have an informed opinion about the boundary change. And I think if we produce something without a transportation plan, I think that would not do our job at providing a parent with sufficient information to have an informed opinion about the boundary change. I think we've got to give them some idea of what it will mean if they're riding a bus, and whether that's a parameter, or a rough sketch, or something like that, or a fully developed plan. I think there are lots of gradations in between, but a communication of some sort to enable a parent to figure out what it means, I think, would be very helpful.
And through the President, to a member Foster, and really to our team. I mean, that's why we met Monday morning in regard to this, and pushed out this notification, really, to probably more people than needed it, because we wanted them to know if this meeting was happening, that if they weren't at the community meetings last week when they were revealed. So we sent them an email, we sent a text message, and the work was to get a letter to their home, so like, however folks like to get it, but we knew the letter couldn't get there by Wednesday, and turning it around Monday to get it mailed. But the goal was the same, that we wanted parents to be informed so that they can provide feedback. We do have parameters that the board has set, you know, no bus ride will be over 45 minutes. This is the, this is how we like to do our routes, this is what's expected from a child who rides a bus, or at a bus stop, things like that. We do have those parameters, and certainly that those data could be, but interestingly enough, the feedback from the board about enough forward movement on this was needed to be able to conduct that, to not cross information paths with families not wanting to know, to do what they asked for, get it to mean, you know, I want to know sooner rather than later, but yet be as informed as I can.
Ms. Hildy?
So I would just like on Monday for us to vote on this proposed boundary change without pushing any other work, trying to cram in before that Monday. So parents, we've had the discussions, it sounds like they went really well, a lot of information communicated out, then transportation, go through the process that every student in our district goes through, and have those opportunities. If there's a problem, go through the process to resolve it. I don't see anything here as a parent that I wouldn't be able to make a decision on, share my opinion.
And Madam President, just to share, we, in communication at the school level, we made giant posters and have them at the schools, and are, through the schools, the schools now that the students have, but some of those would be different schools that they potentially could go to next year. So the principals have these and are sharing with their parents in their own newsletters, please look at this boundary. So that was, I forgot, that was one more way that we were trying to notify parents who might not otherwise understand, but it is imperative, I mean, to the whole point, I think, that everybody's talking about, is we want parents to know where they live, what the outcome might be. Those that are really involved and have attended Eagle River Elementary School really know about this. I wouldn't say that it's going to be a surprise, because they're at a different school already and they're riding a bus, so we're just trying to communicate what came out of the survey in regard to keeping families together, because a lot of kids who never rode a bus before are actually riding a bus now. And we turn, and we did that in a week, because
Well, and I think my concern is more, maybe not that we need it before we vote on the boundaries, but just to make sure that we're looking through our, you know, whatever the hazardous committee, but also through our own process, that our children are safe in walking to school. I would certainly have a concern as a parent of a first grader maybe walking across that bridge. So those are the things I'm concerned about, is that we're going to address those after we make these boundary changes, if we do this, and that we make sure that we're looking at the safe transportation of all our students. Are there any other questions or comments by the board? Are there any more presentations?
All right, this is what we had talked about, you know, at the committee meetings, or the community meetings, rather, and so, given the opportunity, if we have a few minutes, just wanted to touch on a little bit of the long term and these next steps going, you know, coming forward. So getting the committee together, it's the entire ad hoc committee, not just the three board members so far, it's a committee of 17, where we'll have three board members, three administration, four from Eagle River Elementary, and four from Greening, as well as three community members. Wanted to keep it as a manageable committee in size, and because of the timeline, if you guys have looked at the Hot Topics page, or seen what Katie has sent out for a timeline, making sure that all those that are wanting to participate and be able to do this, you know, can help, be available for these next couple of weeks. And so we have that put together, and we've gotten some preliminary feedback on Eagle River Elementary. We are still all on pins and needles for Greening at this point, and I don't know if you wanted to share
I'm happy to.
I can add on to you?
Mike, can you bring that one, our point up? So through the chair, just very briefly, as a member, Snelling indicated, the district is still receiving back the progress, or the project analysis reports. However, last week, we did receive the report for Eagle River Elementary School. We've yet to receive a report from Greening, although we have had conversations with the architectural and structural engineers at BDS on that school. So upfront, we know that Eagle River Elementary School, based on the feedback from the PAR, is repairable, and I'll very briefly go to some discussion on rough order magnitude numbers, as well as the timeline. For Greening, even though we've yet to receive a report and discussions with the engineers, they also believe that Greening is repairable. We don't have any rough order or magnitude numbers to address that. Ideally, we'd have them both together, because if you're really looking at it from a financial picture, it's important to be able to demonstrate both schools simultaneously. Hopefully, we'll be able to do that in the next
They'll speak back when you're too close.
Yeah, I think this one kind of kicks out every once in a while, too. So we're waiting for that report, but I'll very briefly, if I might, just go through the Eagle River information. So next slide, please. So real quick, when we get a, when we get a project analysis report, you know, you can see the components of it. The first is that they really describe the condition of the building, the site, and the grounds following the earthquake, and then what they're presenting to us are what they call concept solutions, or options, if you will, to repair, replace the building. So in this case, we gave criteria to our A&E firms to look at really kind of three different areas. The first being what it would cost to repair the building to get us to a 29 November status. The second set of criteria was what it would take to bring us up to the 29th of September, but also add some seismic mitigation measures into the construction of the repairs. And then the last piece is what would it cost simply to replace the building? So we have construction numbers, as well as what would be their estimates of a total project cost. So to very quickly talk about Eagle River Elementary School, in terms of structural, there really, there are two structural deficiencies, or both in the gymnasium, two walls, that need basically to be reattached to the roof diaphragm. Also, for those who've seen the pictures, the brick facade on the exterior of the gym, the brick has fallen away. That needs to be removed and replaced, either with brick or with a metal paneling to replace the stuff that failed. There are multiple cracks, and then There are multiple cracks, and then the governing standard for seismic retrofit, ASC 4117, there are a number of retrofit needs for this, for this building. So that's the wave top assessment, there are multiple gigs in the school that are within this report. So, very, very quickly, you can see the numbers, these are the cost estimates, there are two figures, or two sets of numbers. First is just the construction numbers, and then the second set of numbers on the lower portion of the matrix. Those represent the rough order of magnitude estimates for the total project cost, and as you work from the left side of the matrix moving to the right, you'll see the cost to just fix to the 29th of November standards. So a total project cost to fix what was broken, about 4.76 million. Now, as you continue to move through, and you look at the earthquake mitigation in the third column of the matrices, you'll see solution, or options A and B. Option A is to replace the brick with brick, option B is to replace that failing brick with the metal panels, which are a bit more expensive.
Mr. Hallman.
When you say restoration to November, are you also including code upgrades that might have existed in the building, but those things will have to be done?
So, through the President, to Member Hallman, not in that first column. Again, that is just to fix the building, to fix the damage that was caused. Now, in the second column, that would include bringing up to the code, as well as the seismic The second to last column are the costs, if it were decided, determined that the building would be demolished, you can see those costs, and then the last is what it would cost to replace that school. Again, these are rough order of magnitude estimates. So, talking about the timeline, again, this based off of numbers given to us on the PAR, to fix the building, just the damages, what they're projecting is a total amount of time would be about nine months from, I guess, time of approval that would trigger our RFP process for both design, and then from that for the actual construction. To talk about the repairs, and then this seismic mitigation, a bit longer, but some of these, we believe, are probably concurrent activities, so what you see is a nineteen-month, you know, we're probably talking about two summers, one academic year potentially, to affect that level of repair. And then you can see the timeline, if you move on to replacing that school, you're looking at about a three-year process. And I'll pause for any questions or comments.
So, I have a question. First of all, the soil is stable enough to build on?
The Eagle River Elementary School did not demonstrate any indication of soil failure or subsidization, so the appraisal of the engineers is that yes, that site is suitable to build on, to repair.
And so, if we can build a school in less than a year, why is it taking us so long on this?
Well, I guess we've got to be careful, it's a bit of an apples to oranges comparison. What you're referring to, the burning of Rogers Park...
I'm asking the question everybody's going to be asking us.
I think it's a number of contributing factors, I mean, you know, one is just the timeline that we need to work through from a funding perspective. I'm understanding, I wasn't here for Rogers Park, but that availability of funding was immediate, and it went straight to RFP for design and then construction. You know, we're somewhat constrained in terms of how we have to approach this, I mean, we're still working through the approval process, and then, again, based on the decision, whether it's repair, repair with mitigation, or replace, we don't know that. So, you know, some of those constraints are also adding to the timeline.
So let me ask you one more question. If our bonds are approved in April, is there anything that keeps us from using those funds immediately?
The language in, the bond council language does give the board the authority to redirect those funds towards earthquake repairs and mitigation.
Madam President, if I might add, so the flexibilities within those bonds, is, are there any constraints on if we took federal reimbursement money from FEMA about the kind of construction? We know that the quickest is a design-build that we've used before that created a school. Would that be an option for this?
Come on up, George, if you would. So, through the President, to Dr. Bishop. There are some definite strings attached, where the district to seek and receive federal reimbursement. The first is that we know if we receive federal money, then we incur an obligation to mitigate against the hazard of a future earthquake, so we'd have to insure our property that we receive federal dollars for. So that's one consideration. Dr. Bishop talked about delivery method. Generally speaking, the expectation from the federal government for this mitigation is that we would do the design, bid, build, delivery method, and that's a bit longer in its delivery, in the process. So, in order to be eligible, we might have to do that, as opposed to expediting either design-build, or, you know, a GCCM-type methodology. Anything else, George?
No, that covers it. Again, it would be, that's one of the reasons why we need to have some type of a plan going forward, so that we can explain what our intent is to FEMA, and then either get their buy-in or not. They are very reluctant on alternate delivery methods. They're familiar with the design, bid, build, as opposed to some of the other ones that could deliver the project faster.
So, we really have lots of options on the table, and some flexibility, given this bond passing?
Through the President, I believe so, and we did have an opportunity to talk through some additional funding options. I mean, the board could approve use of fund balance, at least to initiate some of the planning and design. We do know that there's about 11.7 million in unexercised bond authority from previous bond years. Now, I think if we were to use that funding, that authority for this, that we probably would not be eligible to receive state debt reimbursement, but arguably, that ship's already sailed, so I don't know that that is a constraint on use of those available funds.
So what I'm hearing is, we have options available to us, and that we could do this sooner than this timeline?
We could, we could, I mean, I'm kind of a glass half-full. I think if we get a timely decision, and we're able to move the RFP process, that we could potentially only lose a single academic year for this school.
Any other questions?
And Madam President, just to point that out, where it says a total of nineteen months, if it was in the repairs and mitigation, and as well as others, some of those could be done simultaneously. So your permitting could be done with your, I mean, it's, that nineteen is if they were all stacked on top, not everything could be done at once, but they certainly could be brought within a year, and that's why he's, even though that might look math-wise...
Yeah, I think the other thing that contributes is the fact that we don't have to work around an academic year, that there's nobody in the building, so they could continue work, you know, through the fall and spring.
Right. Any, I know you guys are having a tough time hearing on the phone, but do you have any questions?
No, this is Dave, I don't have any at this time.
Okay. Ms. Mitchell?
She's watching YouTube, so it's okay.
I'll give her a moment. Any other board members?
Yes. Ms. Snelling?
I don't have a question, but when it was appropriate, just to wrap it up.
Okay. I also want to give anyone here in the audience...
Hi there, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
I am watching this on the YouTube channel, because I can actually hear it there. No, I don't have any questions at this point.
Okay, thank you. Okay, if we are... I'm sorry, what? Yeah. So at this time, what we're going to do is, anyone that would like to provide testimony, we will do this as we do in a regular board meeting, with the three minutes, and I think if you want to testify, please come up front. No one?
Yeah.
Oh, okay, sorry. I wasn't sure what you were doing there, so I'm waiting. And if you just state your name and spell it, please.
Kaylee Wotring, K-A-L-E-I-G-H-W-O-T-R-I-N-G.
Did you get that? Okay. And as soon as you see the clock over there, you can begin.
Hopefully, you guys do it wrong, but no. Okay. So, I'm going to do this quick. Bus stop locations, I'm not sure that bus stop locations right now are really super-important to the people, the parents that are from Eagle River Elementary. Right now, it's, the discussion is about the boundaries, and people already have been discussing busing and where their kids are going to be, so my recommendation is to concentrate on that first. Optional, we'll be grateful for any and all busing opportunities that exist. We'd rather have correct information, that takes a couple of days longer than iffy communication that we can't rely on. Most of the busing stuff is on the website, and it's the standard stuff about the distances, and it's going to be the same. Busing is really the issue for the families that I talk to, you, most of you know who I am, but I have a daughter in Eagle River Optional program, but I represent parents, or at least I'm advocating for the parents for all of Eagle River Elementary. They'd like to appeal the distance and the safety issues surrounding the bus stops. People are worried about the areas that were already discussed. We have six families that are busing families, that say they'll not be able to continue with the Optional program if there's no busing. Twelve families who say that they will not, they haven't made a final decision, but that they might not be able to. And while we would be easily able to fill the spots in the Optional program with the lottery, it's really hard to bring kids in that aren't familiar with Optional. We've done it before, we have filled up a sixth-grade classroom, helping to mitigate the overcrowding in a sixth-grade neighborhood class, and we love everybody, everybody's welcome, but when you bring in kids, like any specialized program, Optional or immersion program, and you bring them in, and they aren't familiar with the Optional learning philosophy, their parents aren't familiar with the amount of volunteer hours that they need to put in, it's really difficult for them to kind of get used to our culture, especially in the fifth and sixth grades, where we're probably going to have the most empty spots. And we also like to have our families be able to continue with us all the way through their K through six, so losing our families because of a busing issue, knowing that we'll get our school back, is going to be a difficult thing, so. That's all my time. Thanks.
Thank you for your testimony. Is there anyone else that would like to testify? Sure.
I'll keep this really short, and I can only speak on behalf of myself, but I'm a mom of...
Ma'am, name and...
Oh, sorry, I'm sorry. It's Melissa Goins, G-O-I-N-S, and I have two kids in the Eagle River, sorry, Eagle River Optional program. One of them will go to Greening next year, and so my concern is with busing, because right now, as it's slated, I would, my kids would go to Birchwood, possibly, but I would like for them to stay in the Optional program and not have to exit that program. And so, and it is, like Kaylee said, it's kind of a unique program, and it is, it's nice to have that, and so I would like to keep it as much as possible, so. Anyway, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? Okay, well, is there any final comments from the board, or Ms. Snelling?
I know that this, I've heard a lot of comments about how fast this process is moving, and it really is driven by the need to work with the families and the staff for these thousand children, and to do it under, you know, all sorts of different constraints, whether it's financial, or a construction season, or, you know, the number of people that's having to make all of this work. But trying to rebuild this community is really, really important. There are a lot of meetings that the ad hoc committee has had, have a lot of meetings, you know, with the community, with administration, stuff like this, and encouraging the board to, you know, keep participating in the process as well, so that, you know, nobody's, you know, missing information, or getting caught off-guard, you know. If you have questions, because these are board decisions that we are ultimately making for this community, and so wanting to make sure you have the opportunity to have all of your questions answered, everybody here is available, you know, they've been absolutely wonderful to work with the committee and stuff like that. And so, we are looking to vote on the boundary changes on Monday, the fourth, and the way the timeline is structured, given the opportunity, we'd like to vote on the Eagle River Elementary at a minimum at the 18th meeting, and it just depends on when the Greening information comes out. And so, a lot of this is going to happen, you know, pretty quickly, from where I sit, you know, from Eagle River Elementary and Greening, if possible, to utilizing, you know, this upcoming summer season and stuff like that, is just really, really important. Every month counts up here, and so that's part of why it is going so fast. It's not to make rash decisions, knee-jerk decisions, or, you know, leave anybody out of the conversation, it really is to get things done, to maximize, you know, all of our opportunities. I know that there were also some questions about the makeup of the committee, and why the two high schools were not, I guess, offered a seat at that table, per se, and I think what I just wanted to touch on was, initially, I went for Eagle River Elementary and Greening, because they are the two greatest impacted closed schools right now. I also, as, you know, we're starting to learn that with these schools being repairable, I think some of the concerns from the two high schools may not necessarily materialize in terms of, you know, combining schools, or moving schools, or closing, whatever those, you know, intense concerns are, and so it was never meant to exclude them from the conversation, because obviously, everybody is welcome. If it does get to a point when we get the information from Greening, that it may not be entirely feasible to go down a specific path, there absolutely will be seats open for these communities, hands down, and I will gladly and easily do that. I'm just a little short on some of the information at this point, right now, and so I'm very thankful to everybody who's been a part of this process, from the community, to the staff, to the administration, and, you know, to the board for coming in on special meetings and stuff like that, and just encourage everybody to, you know, keep and continue participating. That's how we're going to find the solutions.
Any other comments? Mr. Foster?
Based on being out in Eagle River for several evenings, I do want to encourage the administration and the board to walk a few miles in their footsteps, and think about the impact on the parents and their students as they think about next year, and the advantage to them to be able to see what we mean when we say we have a busing sort of plan figured out. And I guess I'm responding to the comments that I received, when they looked at the maps when we were out there, is, so what does this mean for me? And I'm worried we're very light on that. me? And I'm worried we're very light on that public presentation. Now, that may be occurring at the buildings and with the PTAs, but I still think we are light on the amount of information that we have developed and are sharing with them with respect to the transportation, and even the concerns I'm hearing here about sort of how it's gonna work out. I think we need to go a little extra mile, and, you know, I trust the process will occur, but I want to be able to represent to the community that we are hearing their concerns and we're addressing them, rather than going, well, that's next, that's next. Let's sort of show them that we're willing to go the extra mile in this presentation. Thank you.
Okay, so at this time, if there's no other comments, I'm gonna adjourn our special session.
So we have something to wrap up.